Two.
When we woke up this morning, we called one another and coordinated.
So it's all told by else though.
Yep.
I never remember being an empty lot.
Tom Termas.
Back in the right side.
Correct?
So with west side? It can be described various ways. Exactly.
Well, it is six thirty, so I call to order this regular meeting of the Sturgis Common Council, December eighteen, twenty twenty-three, last one of this calendar year for regular meetings. First item is call to order. Second item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand or move cover and join us for that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the first action item. It's approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? First by Tony.
I would second.
And second by Dean. Any discussion on the agenda? None being heard. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries. Item four is announcements and praise. I'd like to take a moment and pray if you'd like to join me. Heavenly Father, thank you for the ability to come to you in prayer. And may we stand confident in your sovereignty and your promises and truly understand the gift that, what Christmas is, your condescension to earth and coming for our wrath that we deserve. All this in Christ's name. Amen. We have some written announcements. We have the city employees at their annual Christmas party raised thirteen hundred for the Optimus Toy Drive. So see Dr. Gables here. You want to come up front, Jared, if you would please? We got a large check. I think staff should be a part of this since that's what it's about. Who's volunteering from staff? I'll join you up here.
Yeah, Rick hosted.
Right? Rick was the party host. Come on, Hush. You're the party host. Chief, give them support.
Or if you just stand up. Berry dog him.
Okay.
All right. Awesome. You don't get the name out. I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. You fucked a good work.
He made the big check. Don't cash that one.
Yeah, that one, that one they won't take without the routing numbers. Logistical stuff included on the list is with Monday being the holiday for the next two weeks. Tuesday will be the pickup for garbage on those days. The recycling area for Christmas trees is set up. Ballpark across from the fire hall up there. January council meetings, they will also be changed because of holidays. So instead of the first and third Monday, they'll be the first and third Tuesday of January for the scheduled city council meetings. Any additions from council to announcements and praise? Item five is other matters before the council. An opportunity for non-agenda items. No action possible for both the council and/or the public to speak for a brief amount of time and bring attention to a subject. We'll start with the public today. Anything for other matters? Come on up, bud. Deb, make sure his microphone's on there.
Hello? Yes. Well, hello, everyone. My name is Carlos Ventura. I'm born and raised in the Caribbean in a small island called Dominican Republic, moving up to Rapid City five years ago. Been riding a bicycle for the last twenty-five years, going as a fan, going to all the big events in Europe, in Latin America, and also in the USA. And I used to have the biggest event in the Caribbean called the Santo Domingo Bike Fest, who this year actually turned a twentieth year. So very involved with the motorcycle community in Latin America. My idea of coming here with you guys is meeting so many people in the rallies here with different places in the world, but especially in Latin America, makes me want to do some type of like a gathering for our community. We're not here to take over the place. We just want to have like a theme party one night where everyone is welcome and join the way we enjoy motorcycles. And we enjoy motorcycles with Latin music. We enjoy motorcycles with Latin drinks, the mojito, the Cuba Libre, the Latin American beers, cigars. And it's a moment to enjoy what we like to do, the best scenario in the world if you like motorcycles. So that's why I'm here. I'm willing to ask, answer any question that you guys have, and let's see.
Just a comment. I was down in the Caribbean last week. Why did you move here?
An intelligent man will leave the sun and the sun and beautiful girls in bikinis for mountains and snow for one of two reasons. Either a job opportunity or a woman. What do you think?
Not sad.
So I played the fifth on that one. But, but yes, the, we want to start something that grow up through the years. I've been in, for example, in Daytona for fifteen years on the rally. And I remember the first time I was there, everything was heavy metal and all good old rock and roll. You go today, crowd is younger, younger crowd hear everything, not only because of social media on your devices, but every, most of the people at this time, they know the Latin music. They know Barry Yankee, Ricky Martin, Shakira. They try, they've been on vacation, so they try the drinks. If they like to, to do, if they go to big events or important events, they learn what the cigar is all about, the culture of the cigar. The cigar is not something to be jumping and partying and smoking a cigar. You have to sit down in a couch, enjoy the music that you like, pair it with a drink that you like, so you can actually have the experience that makes it worth it because it's kind of like a me-time thing, so you do it your own way. And that's kind of like the good part of it. And of course, the music and the dancing and what make us interesting as human beings is what we want to bring over here.
Thanks, Carlos. Anything else from council at this point?
I have a couple of matters. First of all, you know, just with the change in the agenda, we moved this portion of the agenda from the end to the beginning. Just curious on the discussion and purpose, I guess.
What was that? Three meetings ago, we did that when it was the first work session that we had to give the opportunity for people to, after fresh on their mind, to, because during the work session, no discussions. Made sense to leave it, we thought, instead of having people wait. Just an opportunity for, when somebody has something that isn't on the agenda, that brings it instead at the end, but.
I guess what I'd ask is, you know, let's try it out for a while and maybe over a couple of meetings, we can ask, you know, through the Facebook and the public, you know, if this is kind of works better for them. Because it is an opportunity for people to, you know, and sometimes they may want to speak about something that happened during that particular meeting, but doesn't mean they can't come back for the next one. But again, if it's for the convenience of the public too, then I think at some point, let's just get some buy-in on that. The second thing I have is, you know, just looking at the twenty-four budget, you know, and by state law, we're supposed to have a balanced budget. And I know we've obligated six hundred thirty-five thousand for the race this year. I'm assuming that we're going to have a supplement that is going to show somewhere where there's a debit. And then again, as I understand it, we're also kind of anticipating that we're going to get sponsorships that's going to pay for all of it or most of it, whatever that may be. So would it be in the expense, there'd be six hundred thirty-five thousand in sponsorship? And then there'll also be another line item with anticipated revenue, means a finance of additional sponsorship to be able to balance that out? I think.
If you would look at my supplement right now, you'll see underneath.
You better get on the microphone, babe.
If you look at the supplement that we're approving the second reading for tonight, you'll see that there is underneath like appropriations, unused cash, or appropriations, TIF money. So there's always, yes, a credit and a debit. So it always says that on the supplemental ordinance. If you.
And tonight's for twenty-three then, so we would have a supplement for twenty-four here in the near future.
Correct. And then it would be just sponsorship funding is what we would assume would be your revenue side.
Okay. And as we get closer to it, depending on where we sit with the sponsorship, then we'll have to determine, you know, where that money's going to come from.
And even part of the discussion in the contract that's in current negotiation is the plan is to not have any city funds allocated during the twenty-four year. Wait till there's some time cycle and then for the ability for the sponsorships to come into the equation, having due in twenty-five. So it allows us to budget accordingly because we have the information on what was there. So the payment won't be due if there is one.
So there is no obligation of six hundred thirty-five thousand in twenty-four.
Correct.
For this race. Well, that KPHB article, I seem to be confused that a little bit then, because that's, you know, when I got back, I was just doing some research on that to kind of figure out, you know, where we were going to put that in the budget and.
In twenty-five with the true data is.
But there's nothing in twenty-four.
Correct.
No cost, no, I mean, so how is it getting paid for in twenty-four? If we don't, is that the AMA race is.
Correct. They're carrying that money till the data is, all the information, all the sponsorships, everything's done for that first cycle.
And then for twenty-five, then we build a twenty-five budget, then that's where we're going to have to put it on there because that's where we may have.
Correct.
An obligation.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Good, Carlos.
Thank you for everything.
You can sit there, I'll meet it if you want. Anything else for other matters?
Mr. Mayor, I, I guess I wanted to build off of a couple of things that we've talked about throughout the year. And the last meeting of twenty twenty-three seems like a good time to, to bring them up. And so for the end of twenty-three, especially since we have our finance officer getting the chance to move on to the next phase of her life and retire in only, what, only about six weeks? Congratulations, by the way. That we make sure a couple of things are lined out. Fourth quarter report matches our line items, line item by line item, not lumped together so that we can truly see compared to the budget book and the budget approved, what our expenditures are per, per line item. Closing out, you know, I never have seen a profit and loss report for the rally, let alone the merchandising that we've done. And those are paramount to, to matching, matching things up and making sure that we're clear to move forward with processes. Another item is the last page of our comprehensive plan dictates a annual report that my research has shown that I don't see one on the, on the webpage from any time previous, and I have not seen that report since my involvement with council. So that annual report, I think, especially since our comprehensive plan has been such an item of discussion, that we complete that, that annual report with the comp plan. As we go to twenty-four, though, you know, I believe, and we had this discussion last time about, last meeting, not last time, about our budget accounting and splitting rallying events and sponsorship, not making that one. I don't know if the council needs to pick that up. I did not, my research did not show that the council made a decision to combine those. So I'm not sure how to split them, but that's a piece that needs to pull, be pulled apart. I definitely want to see monthly KPIs come back because monthly KPIs show us our burn rate, line item by line item, and give us the council the tools to make decisions within our budget, which is definitely our authority. And making sure that all of our reports aren't just pretty graphs, but include hard numbers, historical hard numbers. The graphs are generated off of spreadsheets that are, that are embedded within, within the graph, the graph document. So just include the, the information there. Example would be sales tax. Well, you have one month, but I don't have a historical account of what May and June and July and August. And that information is there because it's plugged in to show the percentages. And finally, that we start working on full accounting of the rally expenditures, including labor. You know, we just, Counselor Jordan just asked about, you know, the AMA race. Well, we might not have hard costs. Maybe we will, maybe we won't. I mean, there's claims still coming through right now over and above what we approved to get this started, but we are certainly going to have staff time involved in that. And so accounting for all of our expenditures of time in that is going to be very important to making sure that we understand the net gains, if there are any, and the, the impact to our budget. Thank you.
Anything else from council for other matters? Bonnie, you got something to add from the public? Come on up. He had enough. Now we're good.
I need training, Bonnie Alberts. After listening all these times that I have online, I will try and be more respectful of the microphone because I understand now. I mean, you know, I can hear me, and so I think I can be heard. So I will try and be better, and I, I don't mind the reminders because I forget. But it is frustrating to be out there and have no voice. And so some of you get text messages from me while it's happening, but the, I've been to Denver, so I've been going to Lakewood Council meetings as well, just to see how they do things. And lost my train of thought. Oh, they have, people who are listening in can also contribute on public comment. But I, I want to address Eric's issue of the public comment. I see what you did, moving it forward. But I think when it was at the end of the meeting, sometimes the meeting itself clears up the questions and gives the understanding, so the comment is not as necessary. Or sometimes the meeting itself then raises the issue. And for me to have the opportunity to have gone by, even though I wasn't speaking, but that it had gone by already, and it's like now, we've got the whole rest of the meeting to go and nobody gets to jump in. And so I, I think having public comment at the end was good for clarification, good for education, and good for summary of the meeting for you folks and for us out here. So that's my contribution.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Did I sound better?
Yep. It was heard. Anything else on non-agenda items brought forward to the council's attention tonight for other matters, public or council? None being heard. We'll move to item six. City manager report by transition team. First is October sales tax. So Fay, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Sales in the month of October twenty twenty-three were three point one four lower than October of twenty twenty-two. Sales for the first ten months of twenty twenty-three were up five point one eight percent higher than the same period in twenty twenty-two. January through October represented eighty-six percent of the total sales in twenty twenty-two. The current trend would provide a deficit in the general fund of nineteen thousand four eighty-eight in twenty twenty-three. The adopted twenty-four budget assumes a total collection of sales tax that is zero point eight percent higher than the current twenty twenty-three trend. And then for the tourism, the triple B sales tax, for the month of October twenty twenty-three, these tourism-related sales were nine point four five lower than October of twenty twenty-two. Sales for the first ten months of twenty twenty-three were eight point nine higher than the same period in twenty twenty-two. January through October represented ninety percent of the total sales in twenty twenty-two. Any questions?
That one would end with a surplus by thirty thousand.
Yes, yes. End with the surplus, yes, of thirty thousand. Thank you.
Any questions from council on sales tax information? How about public input? Item six point two through six point five is payroll. Lisa's making her way up.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight I have a seasonal liquor store clerk. She's actually a returning employee. She worked for us a few years ago. Catherine Soulsback is a lifeguard. She's also a returning employee, worked for us earlier this year. Carter Williams is a new referee for us in the recreation department. And then Sergeant Tebbin just has a correction. He had a stipend that I had missed on the salary resolution, so that's just a correction for his wage, for his responsibilities dealing with the reserves.
Any questions for Lisa from council? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item seven is consent calendar. We have seven point one through seven point eight. We have our minutes, of course. We have uncollectible water sewer accounts, checks not cashed, surplusing limited silver coins, an agreement with the Mead forty-six dash one school district, report on selling the motorcycles at Meacup in January, and setting a public hearing. Does council wish to remove any of those items and discuss them individually?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove seven point seven and just have more discussion on that topic.
Any other items on the consent calendar from council? How about in the public? Which one, Bernie? Any other items from the public? Currently have requests for seven point three and seven point seven to be removed from the consent calendar.
Well, since we're removing quite a few, let's remove seven point four.
So we have seven three, seven four, and seven point seven to discuss. Anybody willing to move on the consent calendar with some minutes, in agreement with the school district, and setting a public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of seven point three, seven point four, seven point five, and seven point seven.
Got a first by Angela, got a second by Becca. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? Please note unanimous for a roll call for the minutes. Brings us to seven point three, approval of the write-offs, uncollectible accounts. Fay, if you want to give a brief staff report.
This is something, is just a cleanup after, on the end of the year. We do this every year. All it is doing is going in and looking at accounts that have not been paid and then going through. Now, this, last year, in the previous years, we have never called these people. Jen, Jenny, my new staff member, said she'd like to call and see if she could collect some of this. She collected, well, last year we had about six thousand dollars in write-offs, and she collected, she, it was similar to that for this year, and so she ended up, we were only writing off two thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars worth. So we are still continuing. This still all goes to our collection agency. We do continue to try to collect them. It's just we're getting them off the books and cleaning up the books. So it's just a cleanup. Any questions?
Any questions on that?
Two thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars is what we're writing off. And then that's just like part of its water, part of its water availability. It's, it's like a breakdown of a bill.
I think that's probably the smallest figure that I've ever heard since I've been on the council.
Yep. Mike, you're, you're absolutely right. She, she was awesome at calling them. Yeah, about sixty percent. And she was awesome calling them. She was kind. She had them apologizing to her for not paying the bill, and so it was, it was pretty nice. So. I, I can't.
Six thousand.
Yeah, it was around six thousand dollars. Yeah. That's about what it runs every year, is right around six thousand dollars.
Dean, you had something?
I was just going to say hats off to her for wanting to take on the initiative and take that upon herself because those are not easy phone calls.
Nope, not at all.
Any other discussion on write-offs? Correct. Yep.
Correct.
For the total of twenty-two, twenty-four hundred and some change. Yep. No further discussions. Anybody willing to make a motion?
I would approve seven point three, the approval of the write-off of the twenty-three uncollectible water sewage garbage accounts.
First by Becca.
I would second.
Second by Dean. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? That motion carries. Brings us to seven point four, approval of the write-off checks not cashed. I think Fay, some information specifically to that one that was for four thousand and truly just a void and things like that.
Yes. Most of these are just ones that, that say they're water deposits, they're for five dollars and sixty-nine cents, or small ones like that. I did try calling anybody that it was over twenty dollars. I did receive, what they do is they've probably lost the check, and that's what we figure out most of the time. And then, so there's paperwork they fill out, and then we can reissue that check to them. And so I do the same thing. I sit and try to call them if I have the information and try to get this money to them. So I did the best. Now, the four thousand is kind of a different one. There was a mix-up with a bank, and the four thousand got put into somebody else's account, not the vendor that we had baited. And then it had to be taken back out, and then it was just a mess. Anyway, this check just never got cashed because they did it, we did it a different way to get them paid. So this check just needs to go away. So we'll just write it off. But yes, generally, they're not that big. Like I said, we make every effort to get the money to them. And it is twenty twenty-two, so we are audited, and so that's why we can clean up, clean this up.
Right.
Same story for the Pete Lean and Dr. Joy Mueller?
I asked Sean to get ahold of Dr. Joy Mueller, and she did, and she said she has a check, she just hasn't cashed them. And so she didn't contact me at all. And yeah, Pete Lean, same thing. Pete Lean was actually a, a double.
Duplicate.
Duplicate. Yes. Yes.
But Sean mentioned this morning that Dr. Mueller was aware of him even back in twenty-two.
Yeah. And, and we had some in twenty-one, actually, that, but yeah. And then we actually have some sitting in twenty twenty-three that she has not cashed. And if they would come to us, you guys, I, we would give them back, you know, we would give them the money if they come in late. We'll just write them off, and then we'll just have to reissue, we'll do a new, you know, new one to them.
And those funds, though, then would come out of the current budget year.
Correct. Correct. But they're actually twenty twenty-two items.
Any other discussion on the write-offs of checks not cashed from last year? I think inherently through the banking system, there's about a ninety-day time limit.
Supposed to be. Yeah.
But if someone brings in a check older than ninety days, most banks will say, get a new one.
I know one of them that we had, we actually made. I know one of them that we had, we actually made it out to the wrong, wrong name, and that, we got that one straightened out, so, um. But yeah, it's about the same every year.
Any other discussion or questions?
I would move to, uh, approve the, uh, write-off of the 2022 checks.
Got a first by Kevin. Second by Tony. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? That motion carries. Item seven point five was moved. It's consideration to surplus, the 22 and 23 limited edition silver coins. Marshall, you want to speak to that?
Uh, yes, those are leftover.
We better get you on the microphone so Deb can.
Coins that were purchased with the hopes that they would be sold through the superstore or during rally. Uh, we didn't sell as many of them as we had hoped to. Uh, coins were given to municipal employees at the Christmas party, and these are the ones that are left over, leaving a small amount in inventory at the superstore. The spot market for silver has been hovering in the 23 to $25 range. Some forecast that it will trend higher in 2024. And the recommendation is to sell those from the spot market hits 25, so we get them out of inventory.
I think it makes sense to, uh, give better clarity on the small inventory you, you referred to in the rallying events department. That's for the intent of putting five-year groups together once five years has passed, so someone could purchase, you know, five coins from the five-year spread. Um, that's the small inventory you referred to, right?
Yes, as well as if anyone goes on the site and wants to buy individual coins.
$80 on the superstore plus tax.
I think there is a 10% discount on those items right now, so $72 currently. And each coin is an ounce. Uh, they have no value to brokers beyond the, uh, spot value of the coin. No value is attributed to them being, uh, rally coins.
Any other discussion or questions? The, the question was from Bernie Sarah, and the question is, will we continue with the silver coins? I believe the answer is yes, with a better understanding of inventory of what, what is, after learning a couple of years. I do think there is a desire for some people with the five-year spans and things like that for collection and things, but that's the plan at this point in time. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Anybody willing to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve seven point five.
Got a first by Dean.
Second.
Second by Angela. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? That motion carries. Leaves this one item that was removed from the consent calendar. This is the sale of the surplus motorcycles, and it's travel that, uh, uh, is part of the package of going to Las Vegas here in about a month and a few week, a week and a month, maybe. Mr. Marshall, I'll turn it back over to you for the staff report.
Uh, the report itself is quite detailed. Uh, the listing agreements have been signed. The motorcycles are posted on the Meacom online auction brochure. They are assigned for sale on Saturday as lots 543. The proposal for getting them there is to trailer them. With Lance and I driving the truck to Las Vegas. Uh, it is the most economical means of transporting. We had been led to believe that Meacom had a transport company which would handle that for us. They do have that transport company, but they do not transport motorcycles. They refer, uh, potential customers to a website, I think is Hall Bikes. And the cost to transport by hall bike is $719 per motorcycle, while the cost to drive them round trip is roughly $725. Uh, the report reflects lodging at the auction site. The auction site has a package that is under their normal rate by waiving their resort fee of $27. And it comes in for Lance and myself under the federal per diem rate for Los Angeles. It also has
Las Vegas.
Las Vegas, I'm sorry. Uh, travel for the mayor, I had estimated higher than what it ended up being, since the mayor need not be there as long because he isn't involved in, uh, getting the motorcycles set up for sale or staffing, uh, our exhibit space. The exhibit space and the fees for the auction are waived, all but $250, which is payable to, uh, South Point. Uh, the report also includes the federal rate for meals and incidental expenses of $69 per night. And, uh, beyond that, I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone would have.
My first question is, I think it says in the report, there was no reserve.
That's correct.
Does that mean there's no minimum bid, whatever's, whatever the lowest, whatever the amount is? Like last year, they didn't meet a minimum bid, so it wasn't sold at, through that process. So if there's no reserves, that mean there is no limited minimum bid?
That's correct.
Okay. And so bottom line, unless nobody, if nobody does bid on the motorcycle, then, then what, then what, what happens next?
They go back in the trailer and are brought home.
Brought back home, okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
On the publishing side of it. So we also published that within the Black Hills Pioneer at some point. I know within state law, there's a specific timeframe from the time there's the auction. I know we got it published probably in the Meacom site for Las Vegas, but just wondering about the process for publishing that here locally.
State statute requires publication twice in the local legal newspaper. I believe that has been done once and will be done once more, not less than 10 days before the auction is required by statute.
Okay, and then we have that 10 by 10 exhibit. It looks like that's just to kind of show off the motorcycle, kind of build some interest for that bidding to, to happen, and I'm assuming we'll have some stuff there with the rally, trying to market it, you know, Sturgis.
That is correct. What we hope to do with that exhibit space is to have a video clip running that features, uh, video developed by Home Slice, developed by AMA, and specifically for the 2024 rally, as well as having, uh, merchandise, a limited amount of merchandise available, and the availability to purchase merchandise through the online store. The exhibit itself draws significant attention to the motorcycles because without that, they're simply stored, uh, with every other bike that's up for auction. This way, they are on the auction floor, uh, prominently displayed and get a lot more traffic by them.
I guess my final questions are probably more for the council is, I guess, you know, the first one, Mayor, is, you know, I know you've been to a couple of these before. What is the purpose of having a political person attend the auction?
I think, uh, the relationship with Meacom is one of the main things, for sure. I think the ability to talk and bond with the person that buys it, we've had some relationships built over the years for the people that purchased ones that through, go through there. So, um, my wife would be really excited if it wasn't on my to-do list every January, for sure, so. But something, helping the future, future partnerships and current partnership growth, for sure.
And then I guess the last one is just more of a comment is that, and I understand that this is a sponsorship contract that we have with Meacom. And, but this wasn't one, the sponsorship that was approved by the council, because it met, it was under a certain threshold.
It was under the 30,000.
I just, what I would recommend to the council, you know, going into 24 in the future, is that, that every, any sponsorship, doesn't matter what the amount is, would be considered and approved or disapproved by the council. Because just using the example of this last year, you know, there were some sponsors that we, you know, we were, it's not so much that we don't want to have a sponsorship, but does our values, do our interests all align? And, you know, once you have that relationship, there's a connection there. You know, based on the optics, based on what's best for our community. Anytime we get into a sponsorship, regardless what that amount is, I think that's something that should come in front of the council for, for discussion and for approval, regardless of the amount. Uh, again, no, no criticisms here. I know this is, uh, it's all legal, it's happened in the past. But just based on past experience for the last couple of years on sponsorships, I think it would be in our best interest to be able to look at all sponsorship agreements and have that discussion and, and have that be approved by the council versus having a certain threshold that, uh, the council does not have to be aware of or necessarily involved in or approve. So, again, just a comment as we go into 24.
Thanks, Aaron.
Uh, one other, perhaps two comments. If I could respond directly to Counselor Jordan's concern. With that, would you contemplate council approval before with a list of sponsors that we intend to pursue? So that there may be sponsors we simply don't want for whatever reason, and that we don't invest staff time in pursuing those?
Yeah, I would think, you know, just based on what we had in 2023, that would probably be, be a smart approach, just because you don't want to waste time uh, when it comes down to planning and coordinating, just to make sure that, yeah, that we're all comfortable with aligning ourselves with that particular business interest. So, yeah, that would make sense to me, absolutely.
And the other comment, uh, might sound like some brown-nosing, but I have watched, uh, the mayor work the crowd and work the sponsors at Meacom, and it provides a real, if intangible benefit, to have him there as the city's representative.
Nope, thanks, Mark.
I guess I'd like to build off of the, some of the comments that were, were made there. It's not a huge deal, but, uh, you know, the report identifies lodging for the mayor, three nights. But only lodging for the two additional staff members for two nights, while the activation is five nights, plus a thousand-mile trip times two. So even if you drove straight through, it's going to be pretty hard to have any less than five nights by two rooms, so. We've, we've missed a little bit there, but that's not really the biggest issue, and that, for me, some of it comes back to the same questions that I've raised repeatedly and have yet to get an answer on. And, uh, that is when and how the council has authorized, I guess, the unfettered spending of general fund dollars to build the endowment, which is a deferred endowment, which only recently has come out, and, uh, as a counselor, I have only recently seen what is, I believe, is the contract for that. But it never talks within the contract about internal processes, processes to navigate or the complexities of trusts and whatnot. Um, annual beneficiary reports and the different pieces that, uh, that come with that. So it was a contract that was approved either through an advisory committee or by the city manager or some other method. But, you know, my numbers, when we look at it, look like our expenses are closer to $10,000 for sending staff there. To compound the, uh, the vagueness or the questions that go with the, uh, the endowment build at some unknown date that we don't seem to have a defined process on knowing where we're at on that, is how are we deciding to send so many of our top staff to this auction? Um, to be there for five days when we have community business that is going unfinished all the time here. And where if it's truly setting up an activation, driving a vehicle or doing something, you know, more in line with that, we have, uh, more than capable staff, uh, that are able to do that.
Uh, first of all, there is no city approval required for a gift. There's nothing that requires the city to sign off on that. If you'd like to reject the gift, you're free to do that. And I don't hear anyone making that suggestion. Secondly, the gift kicks in when they die. They don't have a timetable for their death yet. Roger's 76 years old, and his wife is somewhat younger. So some of those things are unknown and unknowable until they happen. There is no trust in place, as you referred to, so there's no beneficiary designation. It's set up under the foundation with the Black Hills Area Community Foundation.
I agree. It only has city monies deposited in it at this point, and with an unknown on when death may happen to this, you know, untimely death to, to one or both of the hay docks. I'm not sure how that exactly works, but more than likely, none of the people sitting behind this dais, none of the staff that's sitting over here will be here to have any accounting of what our cut is, if you will, and how we, how we run with this. It just seems like the gift is, is fine, but we're spending real hard general fund dollars on advancing the gift. In fact, if we could get a true accounting, and again, it's been asked for repeatedly, and we get, uh, reports that say, to my recollection, and these sorts of things in it, that we are spending nearly as much as what the deferred gift promise is out of the general fund to secure the gift. It appears right off, once again, without adequate com, uh, comments and, uh, documentation, that, uh, as the endowment, we would be far better off to sell these items straight off, put them in the endowment if the council approves that, because once again, we haven't approved the, the money that we're putting into that. I mean, it comes through in claims, I understand that, but there's no prior discussion that leads into that. And we end up spending a lot of money to put not as much money into the endowment on the idea that at some point in the future, we're going to get some sort of a cash influx from it. But there has not been any documentation as to what our, what our match is. The report indicates that, uh, there is going to be an addition of the $24 to the $23. If we are providing 1099s in this, how, how that works, I mean, if it's a gift to a charitable, a charity, it's tax deductible. So there's a lot of unanswered questions in this whole process that, uh, that leaves it, leaves me wondering, and I hope others, wondering, is this a good deal or is it not, to just blindly say? To just blindly say, it's a good deal, we're getting a match, and we should do everything we can and spend every budget dollars that we do, um, is not necessarily potentially a true statement.
I appreciate your position.
And I think that's part of what, bringing this forward this way, prior to it, was kind of what we want to talk about, Kevin, is to make sure that people understood, this is, you know, the costs that we're looking at when we do this, and make sure council has their input on what makes sense and what doesn't in their minds, so.
So is this matching gift for the endowment fund? Is it just tied to this particular auction? Or what is the nature of?
I think it's any auction, is that?
This one is, there was a matching gift for twenty-two and twenty-three, each in the amount of up to one hundred thousand dollars from gifts to the foundation. The city did not pursue those very hard, and it was left in large measure by, through the auction process. The city could avail itself of that or not, as it deemed appropriate.
Yeah, I guess, uh, when it comes down to the endowment fund, and particularly the, this particular matching gift, I'm not real clear on the details. And, yeah, at some point in the future, I would like to, you know, have a better understanding of that. Part of it is, is that, you know, I understand that they want to provide a gift, and that's very appreciative, you know, but it would be, I think, interesting to have an understanding of what is the parameters to be able to get that matching gift? And look at what other options, activities that we could pursue to be able to maximize that opportunity. Again, there's, hasn't been a ton of information on this, it's just been tied to the MECOM auctions, uh, this one here in Las Vegas, the one we had back in, uh, I think in California somewhere last year, or this year. So, again, maybe at some point, that's, and maybe that's, you know, based on confidentiality, that might be something that we'll have to talk in a different type of session, but I still think, if I'm having that question, you know, it sounds like Counselor Forster has some of those questions, and trying to understand what the details are, there may be others, and it would be nice to have that clear understanding. And then, again, what I'll, look at other opportunities to be able to get that match and, you know, be efficient, be productive on, and how we execute, you know, getting that gift. I don't have a, you know, I saw the, I was watching, looking online, watching the conversations on the MECOM auction, I think, was it the meeting, the, the meeting before last?
Yep.
And, you know, we got surplus equipment, that's the approach that the council wants to take, you know, good to go. But it does create more scrutiny for us, so I think it's always good. I appreciate the report and the more detail and the answer to the questions, because I do think how we execute this really kind of matters when it comes down to the optics of it.
I'd like to back us up, all the way to historically, when the endowment was first discussed and put into, from thought into a, a real thing. The purpose of the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally Endowment was, for years and years, general fund money was just written from the city of Sturgis to rally charities to help with their processes, they help lift up and, um, assist with local, you know, entities and nonprofits and businesses and things like that. So, it went from a general fund calculation, a check out of the general fund, from a calculation of the sponsorship agreements for those current years, is how that was generated. It even passed at some points in time through SMRI in those days. So, pretty large general amount, amount, either about twenty-five thousand, all the way up to about eighty thousand, historically, on some of those years that we paid, to help with rally charities in there and what they pass out. That was why the endowment was saying, hey, can we create a situation where funds can be generated, put in a separate account than the city's general fund, and start making income off that, those, that, uh, larger endowment, and use that money given to rally charities versus general funds? So that's where the genesis of the endowment fund came from. So, full circle, there's been pretty large checks out of the general fund in the past, that's why the purpose of this is, was to help create a situation where that was reduced directly from the general fund.
And that is correct. The mayor, the mayor brings up SMRI. A lot of times, the fee that the city would pay to SMRI, those funds would in turn be handed over to rally charities. So, but they were actually city funds. That historically happened for, for many, many years. And so, the endowment was to plan for the future and ensure, work to ensure that the nonprofits in our community would continue to benefit from, um, some of the, the monies that are brought in, um, from our annual rally. And so, I supported it then, I support the endowment now. I think that certainly we can have some clarification on the matching gifts, but I think that it, in the end, it is a benefit to our, uh, to our city.
And to follow up on both of those comments, the Rally Endowment Fund was created in twenty-twenty-one, when the city donated eighty thousand dollars to the fund and received a twenty thousand dollar match. So it began with eighty from the city and twenty from the Black Hills Foundation. And the Haydocks came to me asking, is there a way that we can use our property for the benefit of a Sturgis charity? And they came up with the idea that we can donate property that can be sold, and we will match the sales price of our donated property as a deferred gift. And Mr. Ainsley thought it would be a way to convert in-kind contributions that the city received from other sponsors, motorcycles from other sponsors, that were causing us to run out of space in the, uh, garage. Those were properties that came in, uh, at no out-of-pocket expense for the city, except for the journal entry of an in-kind contribution. And the sales process was used to monetize that.
Is the Haydocks' matching contribution, is it only tied to the MECOM auctions? Or is it tied to all surplusing of motorcycles that Sturgis would do in any particular year?
Initially, it was tied only to matching cash contributions. It evolved to a point where it was sold, for it was motorcycles sold at the MECOM auction, and there is no matching gift, uh, in place for twenty-twenty-four. So this is used to clean up and maximize their twenty-twenty-three offer.
So based on that, then, do we anticipate that, well, you know, what's not going to happen in twenty-four, it may not happen beyond twenty-four also, or?
Quite frankly, I don't know.
Sure.
Well, I do know-
It's a, it's a year-to-year decision that they make.
It's a year-to-year decision, and they have approached me about moving it into twenty-twenty-four and beyond. And the preliminary discussions were, can we establish a program where they can champion the donation of motorcycles to be sold by dealers? And the dealers would waive the expenses of selling the bikes, and the city would get the gross benefit of those without having to incur the expense to take them to MECOM. So it is an evolving project, uh, that the Haydocks remain vitally interested in pursuing.
And it had, sorry, Aaron, but it had evolved to where, there was one meeting where they did bring, they sold the motorcycle and brought a check for eighteen thousand dollars to council, and that went cash directly into the endowment. That one was not a matching one, but a direct cash contribution.
And the beauty of that contribution was, they counted that eighteen as part of their deferred gift, so they gave eighteen twice.
They matched themselves.
Yes.
Deferred.
Well, again, for, for clarity, no concerns that we have an endowment fund?
Right.
It was just more about understanding this matching gift and what, you know, what the nature of that is. More information now, it might be a short-term thing, you know, maybe in, uh, through twenty-four, but maybe not beyond? Because I think, isn't it, we are doing a match for this one, so this is for twenty-four.
This one to clean up for twenty-three, though, is what they're towards.
Oh, for tax purposes, it's still going to be for twenty-three?
Yeah, it's going to go back into twenty-three to keep all that as one clean.
Okay.
Yep.
So, the, the purpose for my questions is really about, when we did this auction last year, and some of the lessons that we learned, that, you know, what Becca talked about here a few meetings ago. And, since this is unique, you know, typically when we have surplus property, uh, we do it other means, this is kind of unique. And the fact that, you know, you're going down there as the mayor, you know, representing the town, the city, the rally, you know, networking, marketing, trying to, you know, build those and establish some strong relationships, that helps us out when we execute events, particularly the rally, that, you know, we just got to make sure that we dot the i's across and t's in the process and how we execute this. And it looks like, you know-
We're getting closer.
Yeah, we're doing one in January. Are we doing any more of the MECOM auctions in twenty-twenty-four calendar year? And are we intending to do this every year, at least once a year into the future?
To answer that question, what I believe is no more in twenty-twenty-four after the Vegas one, is, be my understanding at this point in time, with what we have and what we need to do. And then also, I believe the, the January motorcycle sale in Vegas, I think, this will be, it'd be the fifth one, I think, this year, maybe the fourth in January of twenty-four. So, I think it would make sense, if the inventory does exist, in order to continue that, that process annually in January.
Well, and if that's the intent, then let's just continue to improve our process. You know, I think, Counselor Forster brings up some good points in terms of who goes down there. You know, we may not be able to sustain, uh, sending senior managers, you know, any year out. Potentially, if it's a sponsorship thing and it's marketing for the rally, you know, the position that Lance is in, being a sponsorship chair probably makes a lot of sense. But when it comes down to, you know, uh, other folks, you know, that's something that we should probably, you know, consider what we want to do long-term on that. You know, when it comes down to either finding another means of getting motorcycle down there, or if we're going to send people down, because I agree, I think when you send people down, that, that's a cost, uh, because they're not doing their functions that they were hired for. And so, that week-long, whatever we would typically pay them, the wages are going towards a different activity than that activity that they were necessarily. And again, on occasion, that's not a bad thing, in particular, as you're building stuff up, but if we're going to, again, do this long-term, I just think we need to build a process in there that's going to be more efficient, you know, in terms of how we spend taxpayer dollars, and, you know, how we're spending our travel funds. Because I know with twenty-twenty-four, we had a lot of discussions on trying to make that balance, um, match up, and we kind of took away from some travel budgets. So the more we do on some of these things, it takes away from other activities that, you know, are important to our community. So, again, it's just about being efficient and doing it the right way.
Yeah. Well, and I think too, you know, we need to serve a reminder that one of the personnel going is our sponsorship director, then, and this type of thing falls under the duties of, of, you know, falls under the description of, of that individual's job. And I think going back to, you know, these planned charitable contributions, a deferred gift is very popular. So, I mean, there's a lot of nonprofits that utilize them. So I think it's not anything out of the ordinary that our endowment is receiving. So I'm not quite sure, other than, you know, certainly, um, we could have the endowment statements, I think those can be forwarded to council, and, you know, perhaps just clarifying some of the questions as far as, um, the donors' plan. I think those are very easy, yeah, intent, I'm sorry, thank you. I think those are very simple answers, um, for us to, to find out.
And Darren, I didn't ever think that you had a problem with any of the endowment at all, I just wanted to historically set the mind that we used to spend a lot of general fund money, because that, and I do believe this process, albeit always is evolving and can be made better, we are doing, but being better stewards of taxpayers' money, with the checks being smaller, written out of general fund, for sure.
Yeah, I can absolutely see, this auction, we've, we've implied a different process, and I think we're much more efficient than the last time we did it. So, yeah, in that case, I, I, I'm happy about that.
I'd like to respond to a couple of those pieces. I agree that the endowment was created to help sustain our ability to donate to rally charities. The limited discussion that I was involved with is, is it came from some of the donated items, and sale of things like cups, which, you know, we really haven't seen a profit and loss on the cups, so that's a separate topic to be talking about. But the fact is, is we are writing large checks out of the general fund. Go back and review the claims, just a handful of meetings ago, um, I'm going straight off of my mind, I think it was fifty or seventy thousand dollars that we wrote to the Black Hills Community Foundation to add to our endowment piece, which would be part of a, a matching, uh, gift from this, uh, from the Haydocks. What we're missing, though, is the accountability of it, the tracking, and that leads to additional other questions. We talked about the inventory. I never have seen how many motorcycles that we've received, received historically, how many we have now, and where they all went. I believe some of them might not have even went through surplus, surplus means. Just here, I heard the city attorney talk about sending the, these motorcycles, surplus motorcycles, trying to get it sent to a dealer. Well, South Dakota state law doesn't give us a vehicle to just have someone else sell those items for us. It has to be through sealed bids or public auctions.
Yeah, I think he was talking the donations of the real property from Haydocks, not ours.
The donations of the real property, which has been, how many so far? One?
That discussion was about future events, and it hasn't been structured. The city would not give its property to a dealer to resell.
Thank you for clarifying that, because that definitely would be, in my understanding, against the state law. The question is not trying to fund the endowment, and for clarification, the endowment, uh, you know, I don't know whose name is truly on the endowment fund, I would be interested to see that. It might be interesting to know if we even have, if we have people that are even fully employed yet from the city still on that endowment, uh, organizational paperwork. But it's the funding that we're sending to it every year without accountability. We're still making the same donation to the rally charities organization, and we are putting a large sum into the endowment that comes with it, large expenses, which just tonight, for the first time, we shared that they have to be sold at MECOM, in order for us to capitalize on. And never have we had any discussions on where we are, uh, how we are tracking this. I mean, we're, we're getting a new finance officer, six weeks. His career might even be over here by the time, by the time we're trying to follow through this deferred donation. And it doesn't seem like, uh, we have every i dotted and every t crossed in the process. We surely haven't had inventory of all these in-kind items that have passed through to say what has happened with every one of them.
Every motorcycle has been put on as an asset onto the books. I mean, the auditors make sure of that, every one of them has the VIN number, um, it's, they're on our, they're on our fixed assets report. It's, they're on our, they're on our fixed assets report.
What kind of process would it take if we gave a motorcycle to someone that performed an activity for us, say during the rally? Would the council approve that transfer?
You mean such as giving it to the pals so they can raffle it off?
Uh, no, not, not necessarily that because that, we had action on that and it was decided that we gave it to pals.
Okay.
In lieu of payment.
Give, give me a description of what you're talking about. We've never given out a bike without surplusing it first because that's one of the first things the auditors look at, is on our list of motorcycles, it's surplus off.
If I may, I, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you may be referring to a motorcycle that was paid, if you will, to Cole Hauser for doing the jump.
Freeman.
My rec, Cole.
Freeman, yeah.
Cole Freeman. My recollection is that the city compensated him for doing the jump by giving him one of the donated motorcycles. That was done under Mr. Ainsley's watch. And all I have, all the knowledge I have about that, I have shared with you now.
And that was surplused.
I understand the surplus, but the state laws clearly says how we dispose of surplus property. And handing it over instead of a check is not necessarily listed in my read of SDCL thirteen six, I believe is. And this ties to today's discussion because we have lots of clouded items still associated with the donations of the, to the endowment, the funds that we are expending to get these possible, these future donations and the process that we're using to, to get there. We don't have an accountability, accounting. I mean, you said you had a full, full list. I don't, I mean, how many motorcycles do we have today and where are they?
I would have to go look at my fixed asset record, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
And then that's, that ties to our last meeting discussion where the auditors, the third-party auditors, not the state auditors, the third-party auditors that we hire, do not do an in-depth dive on our rally. They look at the, at the bottom line numbers and they don't dig into all the expenditures that we're making and how we're doing that.
Well, I'd like to have the auditors speak to, to you about that. So we could get Jeff up here and he can tell you what they do look at in the rally. Because they do look at the rally, they look at their expenditures, they compare year to year. If things are higher or lower, they ask me why they are higher or lower. I print out detail to them. So they, they don't just pass through on the rally. They, they look at it and I could surely have Jeff come up and here and, and explain to you what they do do and why there is that, just the other thing that's in the budget or in the audit that is something that we create and they do not audit that part of it. But they audit the rally and the sponsorship.
And they clearly state that they don't audit the rally in their report.
Just that report, just that report.
Well, I understand.
Anything else, any other columns, it, it is in there and they look at that. That, that report, and the reason they say that's not audited is because we pull those numbers together. So, but the audit, the rally and the, and the sponsorship, they are auditing those numbers. The revenues and, and it's huge to them. That's a lot of our revenues and a lot of our expenses. They would never not audit that.
Well, I definitely would certainly have the, enjoy the opportunity to hear from them on why they put in their reports, not just the twenty-two report, but every report that's on our website, that they do not audit the rally. But I would like to make sure that it's in public session at a council meeting.
Absolutely, I can invite Jeff up so, to come up during a council meeting.
Back to the question at hand of consideration to approve the sale of the surplus and corresponding travel. Any further discussion?
Couple of things. You know, just for, you know, listening to Counselor Forster, you know, you know, what is the accounting practice or how would we kind of show what the current value of our endowment fund is? What the current, or the future value is going to be based on those matching gifts that will come at some point in the future? We'll have a better understanding of that, us sitting here, the nine of us right now, this particular in time. But in, you know, five to ten years, how do we account for that benefit? And to be able to have an understanding of what we think the true value of that fund is.
And the, and the running ledger, basically.
Right, yeah, and I, I'm assuming, you know, there's a way we can probably figure that out. Then it's, it's clear, it's, you know, and again, it's, it might be a projected amount, you know, I don't know exactly. But I just know from my own personal budgeting, from my own personal, you know, I have my current budget, but I also got future budgets and, but I understand those future budgets are based on assumptions and I have to continue to evaluate those assumptions. This one's a little different, we got a matching amount for X amount. I'm, I'm assuming it's not growing interest. I mean, if it's, let's say it's ten thousand dollars the match. And when, say in fifty years, we get that money, it's ten thousand, it hasn't grown or anything, just, just to be able to track that. So I think if we had some kind of tracking mechanism to be able to see, particularly on something like that, that's unique. We are not getting a gift in the account right now. It's a future obligation to put money in that account at some point in the future, in some way to track that. I had another one, but I can't remember it.
Annual report.
What's that?
An annual report. Actually, I believe it should, in the research, because I, lots of nonprofits use the deferred donations. Becca, I agree. But every bit of research that I've seen is, is they receive annual reports from the donor. It says what they have provided. Either that, and I don't know how it's set up, this outside of my pay grade, but are we sending any kind of annual tax documents to the donor?
You're not because the donation hasn't been made until it's realized.
Okay.
The way that you determine the value of it is you do a discounted present value based on his age. That'll give you today's value of that future gift.
You know, the last thing I had was, you know, and I would be interested to hear, you know, some of your questions and answers on the audit part of it. I also think an opportunity, and Becca, I know you and I have had this conversation, as we go into twenty-four, you know, one of the, our, you know, opportunities here to improve on was providing, you know, more real-time oversight of our spending and execution rates for all the activities within twenty twenty-four. And so, you know, as we're looking at that, you know, maybe from legal and finance every month, from the council every quarter, you know, getting that right, showing that information, you know, I, I think gives us more clarity on, you know, where, where we sit in terms of the budget for each of those line items, based on what the department heads are telling us, are they executing on, on target or below or above? And if we're going to have to have, make some adjustments, you know, we can kind of have our headlights out farther enough to be able to do that. And we've had conversations about it. So again, the, the audit's important, but I also think our oversight and how we execute twenty twenty-four budget is also, allows us to have those two work together and making sure that we're, you know, we're doing things correctly and transparently and, you know, rightly.
And Kevin, in twenty-one, when the bike was given to Cole, didn't we discuss that in legal and finance?
Well, I have discussed it in legal and finance, but legal and finance is not city council.
I know, but, I mean, you would have been a part of that committee.
Advisory committees and true council action.
But I'm saying it would have been, it was discussed among council, I believe. I think we can go back through legal and finance minutes and, and look and see, or notes or something.
I, I don't disagree that it wasn't discussed lightly, but it did not track through on how it met state law.
Sure.
Same question goes with our Monterey.
We were all a part of those discussions.
And these questions have existed.
Yeah, that's right. But I mean, you and I were both part of those discussions, you as vice president, myself as president.
Answers.
Yeah, but we were all present for those.
Anything else on this particular item? Bonnie, what do you have to add? Come to the microphone, please.
Bonnie Alberts. Hang with me because this might take a second, this, you know, we've covered a lot of ground here. And so there's, there are several things I want to address. Clearly, Kevin has concerns about accountability. And I, I think like Kevin does in some ways, to me, it's the arithmetic, it's the math. And I've been trying to make sense out of the math and it's not quite adding up to me right. And I, of course, I'm on a much smaller, pettier scale than Kevin is looking at these things. But I want to be supportive of Kevin's need for that documentation and that we're accounting. And not in a professional sense accounting, but we're keeping track of things appropriately. And one of the things I think is important to say, and I think so far, so good, but we're starting to get a little edgy, is that we can question, we can have inquiries, but it's really critical that we maintain civility. And that's hard to do when the issues get really important and really close to our hearts and, and close to our responsibilities. But I, I do want to look at the math on the upcoming auction, the twenty-fourth, because I can't quite make it add up yet. And then I want to reflect on the auction of twenty twenty-three. And so as, as I look at this, I'm not clear who's going. Mark's going, Lance is going, and Mayor Mark is going. Is anybody else going? Does that account for all the rooms? It's, it's three bodies?
That's correct.
Two bodies have five, have five days of expenses and one body has three days of expenses. And you guys are going on gas money and he's going on a cheap airline ticket. So, okay, so, and then there was also, I appreciate seeing that forty-one to fifty-four hundred dollar value placed on the relationship. Because you look at that and if we were just selling the bikes through Meacham, we would have those additional expenses, which because of the relationship, they discount to us. And so we really bring in the overhead on three people to less than what Meacham has given us off, has discounted to us. So that's a positive thing, I think that's a good thing. I think the question comes up as to who's going and, and how does that fit into their job description? And this is not just selling a motorcycle. It seems to me, I mean, from what I've looked at online and stuff, this is essentially a trade show in its own sort of way. And who is there and who's representing and who has the skills to work a trade, trade show is really, really critical. And some people have it and some people don't. Mayor Mark has it. And so in, in that sense, I want to be supportive of that. It's a, I'm, I'm realizing how important that display and that presentation and that networking process to the motorcycle groups and, and whoever all may be there, because I certainly don't know. But I do see the value in that and I just want to state that outright. I think where we got into the Donnybrook was with the last auction. And I will always say that there are two realities. There's the perceptual reality and the factual reality. And we need to keep, we need to keep track of the factual reality, but we also have to deal with the perceptual reality and we don't have much control over that with the public except in the form of how we track and account for ourselves. And so, very loosely sharing with you what comes to me because you know how I go. I mean, things splash on me and I try to bring them to you in a valuable state. But I'm not one to quote and, and list details. But the perceptual reality of that last auction was everybody and his uncle went and had a wonderful time at the expense of the city. And whether that's accurate or not, that's the perception out there. And we have to address that and we have to deal with that. And we still haven't really accounted for that. And if more people went than should have and had a better time, then they maybe ought have. It's the factual reality. We lay it out there, but we really haven't laid that out there yet. I'm just going to say that and pass on. Historically, I think we have a problem with our history. Because what I see here over time is that we are dependent on how long Mark has been mayor. And, and I am again and again impressed with how quickly and easily, Mark, you pull back the facts, the history, how things were. And it may not have gotten said publicly, or it may have gotten said publicly and it washed off of us. But you're a really good historian in that regard. And so is Rick. Rick's a extraordinary historian. And when we're talking about things like bridges and why we're paying this amount this time and we didn't get that last time and why, what we did wrong and not getting it, the bridge properly passed through before we wound up paying for it, that history is really important. But if he's not here, if he gets tired of working and moves on, who, who remembers those things? Where are they kept and how do we find them? And how do we have that real understanding of the history of each of our projects? Whether it's the rally, whether it's an incident within the rally, whether it's a bridge, a road, a recreation area. I don't think we're doing a good job. Yes, Fay is accounting for it professionally, it's in the numbers. But can we find it? Can we connect those dots? Can we, when we're trying to assess and make decisions for moving on, are we really able to call back the experience if we didn't participate in it? So I'm going to say, I think we need to, I think maybe you need a task force to look at some of these issues that can bridge the gap between your, your perceptual reality and your factual reality. And that can help preserve, what Kevin's concerned about is how did these things come down and why didn't we know it? Or maybe we did know it, just nobody's here that remembers it or was there for it. I think there's got to be some way that you can keep a journal, a record of sorts, that's sort of the family portrait of each of these critical projects. I mean, what keeps us from making that mistake again when Rick's gone and Mark's gone and Mike is gone? And we don't remember how costly that kind of a mistake can be. So I don't know what the answer is. I'm no historian. But I do think something has to happen for this group that we can say, oh yeah, we're wondering about that. Well, by next time, let's go back and look at that and, and reread that history and see just what did happen, when and where. I think there is a little problem with, there are some things being discussed and going on in our, what do you call them? Well, you said finance.
Committees.
Are they committees or they?
Committees, yeah.
Okay. Those, and I remember one specifically that I went to, it was where use of review goes before it comes here. We're just use of review.
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, okay, I was in planning and zoning meeting. Man alive, there was a lot of stuff going down there and there were a lot of dynamics going down there that didn't get resolved. But little things like pop rocks going off, you know, in a meeting like that. And then when I come back to the council meeting and we see how those things work through, I'm thinking, gosh, these guys are, some of these guys are really oblivious to what went on back there. So I, I think that we need a better way to connect the dots and, and share the, the reality, the factual reality. So that's my offering. That's just, that's, those are my observations and, and I'm frustrated for you, I'm not frustrated by you. But even, Mark, when I'm, when I'm reading this report that was written this time, I still had to ask some questions. The, it wasn't exactly clear how many and what. I, I do think on some of these. I, I do think on some of these documents, a cold reader needs to read them and see if it makes sense to them when they don't know what it's trying to say until they read it. And I don't see that happening. And that's one that I've been crying about since we were up in the courthouse. And, but I, I think that it makes sense to the person who wrote it, but it doesn't make sense to the audience sometimes. And I, I think a cold read would be useful on that. But we never have gotten that kind of revelation on last year's auction. And I think that's what people are waiting for. And I think Becca tried to do that. And feels like she said it all, but it didn't get all said, Becca. The questions are still. I think, I think people are still waiting for this kind of report on the experience that already happened.
And I think we can continue, I mean, for me, the communication and looking at these kind of issues is continual. It doesn't mean that, you know, it, it ends. And as we move forward and, and we're heading into, you know, the event next month, I mean, it, it can always be fine tuned.
Exactly.
And it's an ongoing, ongoing conversation.
Well, and Becca too, you have a bear trap mind. You do meetings, you hear things, you participate in things and they stick to you. I do not. I'm an INTJ. I gather the information. I am in it. I am up to my earlobes in it while it's happening, while it's coming down. I make my peace with it. I make my decisions about it. And that doesn't, it doesn't matter whether I'm buying a car or a washer or deciding what to plant in my garden. I am a personality type that gathers a whole lot of information to make an informed decision. And once I make the decision, I work with the decision and I don't keep the information. And then somebody asks me, why are you planting those beets like that every time? And it's like, well, I'll have to go look it up, I guess, because I just know that's the right thing to do because I already did it. I already gathered the information. But some of us don't keep all those details. And you do. And when the rest of us don't, Becca, sometimes it's like, well, what's wrong with you? You were there. And I was there too. And, you know, and we've had that conversation too. And I'm not picking on you, but I'm saying, Becca, because I know you and I can talk like this.
Absolutely. No, and I appreciate that. And, and talking about another tidbit of information. I went back and I found it was January 27th of 2022, so not quite a year ago. That is when our former city manager sent an email to all the council members at that time, stating that we had just received our first annual statement. So from, from the rally endowment. So I think it's probably fair to say that we can anticipate our next annual statement, the end of January. And what I would think, you know, what I would like to suggest is for Kevin to take the questions that he presented tonight and send them, especially to legal and finance.
Because I want to know too.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it could be a report. And, and you know, like, like Counselor Jordan and I have talked about, as we are streamlining and kind of refining the budgetary process, that could be, you know, our endowment fund, that could be part of our quarterly report. You know, we talked about having quarterly reports. I mean, that can be something that, that we include going forward. But I think it's the idea for Kevin to submit those questions that, that he had concerning the donors, you know, donors' intentions. And we can kind of refine what, what is included in our, what I'm anticipating to be our upcoming, upcoming endowment annual report next month.
And that would be kind of wondering that Kevin has, but I don't have the focus. I don't have the background knowledge to be very specific in, in refining that. But I do have, inquiring minds need to know. And, and mine is an inquiring mind. And I don't know how you that fast just found when that annual report came out. I mean, that's, that's the thing, Becca, you are so good at that. And you are so good at doing the research and your, your preps for the meetings. But we don't all have the same skills. And, and it takes all of us to knead the bread, to go through the process, to contribute to the decisions. But those are some of the things that I would like to see. And, oh, and the other one, sale of cups? What cups? I don't, I don't know what the cups are.
Those are our open, our open container cups that are available during the rally, the plastic, the plastic ones.
Clear plastic cups?
Yeah.
I only know that because I found them in Tia and Jay's garage. Okay. So they're not like the aluminum ones that we talked about at one time?
No, they're, yeah.
Okay. All right. See, and things like that come up and we just wonder, sale of cups? What cups? Where'd that come from? Thank you.
I'd like to add to the, to the item, the, the statement that was provided by Daniel actually was provided to me by October of this year. That's the Black Hills Community Foundation Endowment Balance. That's two different things than what I'm talking here. I'm talking about the balance that's not in the endowment. The deferred donation that does not show in the endowment balance because it's deferred. The endowment balance in October, Fay, can you help me? I believe it was $173,000.
Deferred or you mean?
No.
The Community Foundation Balance was $173,000 before we added either 50 or 70, whichever it was, through the claims after that. We don't have a statement though, on what our deferred donation amount is. The, the endowment was started just as was stated with $80,000 of city money. And the Black Hills Community Foundation, if you start a new endowment, will match a four to one up to $20,000. So we put in the maximum amount, 80, and got 20 out, 20 out of them to start it at 100. And since then, the city has put 100, 73 plus whatever the claims had in it. And we can get that statement, I'm sure you could go pull that by logging in tomorrow. That's not, that's not the question at hand. The question at hand is, is how are we tracking the deferred donations? And that never has been provided. And this ties into the sale of the motorcycle in Las Vegas because we're weighing so heavily on the total amount that we're going to make deferred. And at no point do we know what, what amount we have waiting in the deferred. Nor have we had a complete inventory of all these items through history, so. I will stand aside and let this continue.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Before we move on to the next agenda item, which will be, I'm assuming 7.8, the variances.
That one passed. That one was part of the consent.
Oh yeah, we passed it. I just want to make an observation. I sat here and I listened to this discussion for just about an hour and two minutes from the beginning when we walked in here. And if I take a look around the room, I see 18 city employees sitting here. That's 18 hours of bullshit. Call it what you want. That's 18 hours of non-productivity because we're going to walk out of here tonight with nothing to show for it. We might get some rules and regulations in the future, but tonight has been a total waste of my time to be here. Take that for what it's worth. Just wanted that on the record publicly.
Any other discussion? Anybody willing to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll turn on my microphone. I move to approve item 7.7, the approval sale of surplus motorcycles and corresponding travel.
Second.
First and a second on the table. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Pose to no.
Abstain due to lack of information.
The motion carries. 7.8 was passed with consent, brings us to claims. Item eight, Fay, we have some late additions from the late Thursday night packet that was sent out. So I want to have you take it over and give us some clarity in these.
There was some additions on Saturday that was made. And then also this morning, there was a $20,000 payment to Dolan Creek Apartments. So the total now, and I did send that report out this afternoon, it is 461,569.41. With the addition of the Dolan Creek for 20,000, there was also a couple of changes. There was two, in sponsorship, there was a duplicate, so that was taken out. And then there was just one that was made out to the wrong vendor. So that amount stayed there. It just got put to the right vendor.
That's the plat one.
That's the plat one, correct.
The duplicate and the sponsorship was the intellectual property attorneys.
Reese, yeah.
Yeah. Due to, yeah, put in both the old system and the new system.
Yep.
But I guess again, for clarity, basically a much larger number than that second in that afternoon claim sheet that was sent out.
On Thursday.
Yeah. Then compared to the one that was included, does council have any specific questions? I guess Fay, let's summarize it with some capital improvements that we want to include on this budget cycle year.
Correct.
The 20,000 for, for the Dolan Creek Senior Living.
Yep.
The correction on the plat, the vendor to be the correct person. The removal of, of the duplication. The plat's under planning and permitting and the, and the duplication's under sponsorship.
And then the TIF, TIF 18 is where the 20,000 is. Plus the additional of the heavy constructors, their final payment, which was made on Saturday. There was a couple of other engineering ones that were put on here on Saturday. And that, that did go out to everyone.
Right. But later than the original packet.
Those large ones, yes. They all went out on Saturday.
On Friday, yeah.
Friday. Was it Friday night or Saturday? Lisa took care.
20,000 is, would be in the TIF section, right?
Yes, it's the last page. It's page 19.
And that's for the Dolan Creek Assisted Living and Independent Living.
And that's the final payment on that also.
So one more time on the total, Fay, just so we have four, six.
461, 569, 41 cents.
Do we have any retainage on the Dolan Creek project? So they're completely clear?
They, we've processed the, the final payment and I've asked Fay to hold it till I release it, that all the punch list items are done. They're expected to be done tomorrow and the next day. But we won't release the payment until the punch list is done.
Does the punch list include any of the rehab on the detour route?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions on the claims?
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I would move to approve the claims with the sum total being 461, 569, and 41 cents.
We got a first by Becca.
I'll second then.
Second by Dean. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Pose to no. Bills are paid. Brings us to item nine, which is reports. 9.1 is second reading of 2023 supplemental appropriation. Fay, I'll turn it back over to you.
Um, the, uh, this will be our second reading. There were no changes from the first reading. It is exactly as it was on the first reading.
Any questions or discussion, public or council, on second reading of ordinance 2023-05?
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I would move to approve the second reading of ordinance 2023-05.
We got a first on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I would second.
A second by Dean. Any last discussion, public or council, on second reading of this ordinance? None being heard. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Pose to no. Please note unanimous for the roll call. Item 9.2 is an award for the bridge structure on Whitewood Service Road. Welcome back, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Up for consideration tonight is the award of the Whitewood Service Road Bridge Structure Preservation Grant. This is a follow-up to the award of the big grant from the state of South Dakota. Sturgis was awarded $384,100 to be used for rehabilitation of that bridge structure. We did have a bid opening. We only received one bid. That was from JV Bailey and Company in the amount of $287,836.20, which is $96,263.80 underneath of our maximum. What we do have to do is we have to, the city will front this money and then we get reimbursed 80% up to that maximum. Given the bid that we received, we should be able to include the engineering in that as well and, and should be able to maximize that out at a minimal cost to the city. The recommendation from the staff would be for the city council to approve that bid to JV Bailey and award that. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You know, this was a, a topic that we approved when we did our capital improvements plan back in, I think, a couple of months ago. So I would make a motion to approve the staff's recommendation on this.
We have first by Aaron.
Second.
We have a second by Becca. Any other questions, comments, concerns from council or from the public on the grant? This is what we'll tax dollars go to. Is that correct, Rick?
Correct.
Yeah. No further discussion. And a first and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Pose to no. The motion carries. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Extraordinary presentation there, Rick.
9.3 is consideration to prove the design work out at the airport. Welcome, Mr. Smith.
You think his was good, but you see mine. Mayor, council, thank you. Background information on this, bipartisan infrastructure or bill law has provided 15 billion in airport infrastructure funding. The money can be invested in runways, taxiways, safety and sustainability product, projects, as well as terminal and airport transit connections and roadway projects. For the third year, we are applying and have submitted an application portion of those 2.9 billion that's available in South Dakota for airports. Our consultant believes that we will have a greater chance of obtaining the grant if we have a shovel-ready project in the works. The design and engineering project will be covered by another area of funding through bill or the bipartisan infrastructure law for airport infrastructure projects. The budget impact, the total cost of the design work and engineering is $94,449.40, where we will be responsible for 5%. If my math is correct, that's 400, $4,722.47. Request that the council approve this and motion to allow the city attorney to sign the paperwork and documents.
This is just the design phase.
This is just the design phase. It's costing us $4,700 to roll the dice in hopes that this helps us get the actual grant for the new terminal building and snow removal equipment, storage.
Yeah, again, just as the last report, this is something that was on our capital improvements plan that we approved as the council a couple of months ago. So I'd recommend we approve the staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
We got a first by Aaron and a second by Tony. Any further discussion, public or council? Any further discussion, public or council? None being heard. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Posed to no. That motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Item ten is executive session. Um, it's my understanding there is no action after executive session, but the request is needed. So is there a motion to go to exec?
So moved.
And a first by Angela.
I'll second it.
Second by Tony. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Posed to no. It is eight nineteen. We'll go into exec approximately eight twenty-five.
We're live. All right, we're back in regular session. Last item is a motion to adjourn. Is anybody willing?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Got it first by Aaron.
Okay.
Second by Dean. All those in favor of the motion please indicate.